Okay, so we are going to move on to our first set of questions. And the first topic candidate is going to be on housing. So remember you have one minute to answer this question. And this first question, each of you will be answering it. So we'll start with Margaret. And the question is, how do you recommend we balance the growth of employment and housing in the city?
I think in order for us to balance the growth of jobs and housing in the city, we have to recognize that that equation is something that we alone cannot achieve. The housing imbalance is something that definitely is one that is regional in scope. And our Mountain View Housing Unit Growth Rate Plan is approximately 1.7% per year. And that is approximately double the growth rate of the Bay Area as a whole. And as of August of 1st, we have 1,600-plus units of apartments, row homes, condos, and affordable houses being built in many areas of the city with many hundreds under review for future plans. So I think that we have made a huge effort and will continue to do so to provide as many houses as we can in 12.2 square miles.
Thank you. Ellen?
Great, thank you. So there's obviously a relationship between companies and housing. Companies can't function well without employees, and employees need affordable and adequate housing for their families. And this is something we see on the Planning Commission with a lot of the projects coming through. And the approach that I feel is necessary is to look at each development project on a case-by-case basis. How does it look into the community? What's already existing? And what will it look like in 30 years? So we're very fortunate to currently be a very desirable place and be a great place to live. But I think it's a pragmatic approach about, you know, also what are the services that are currently available? What is the school district currently like? And what can the capacity reach? And what can that be for the future? Thank you.
Thanks, then. Okay, Lisa?
So jobs and housing are really a regional issue. There are no barriers between the cities, and people often change jobs, and yet they don't move. So we really need to look at this on a broader scale than just Mountain View. But of course, you know, Mountain View can also do their fair share. And we do have about 2,800 units in the pipeline that's approved and in the process. And as I mentioned earlier, there are other places where we can add housing. The Wisman area, where the infrastructure is already in place. There's a couple of schools that we'd love to see reopened. There's public transportation. We could use more residents so that the retail could be thriving in that area. It's a perfect place to add some. But we also need really great, effective public transportation so that you don't have to move and you don't have long commutes, but you can live where you currently live and work someplace else.
Thanks, Lisa. Hey, Jim?
Office, office, office. Now, I'm not talking about Microsoft Office, although that is my favorite word processing package, okay? I'm talking about what we've been building here in Mountain View for the last few years. We've been building far more office than housing. So I would like to see that slow down. I would like to see housing carefully considered and putting it where we can put it. And I would also like to see a public and private partnership between the city and between some of the larger corporations that do employ a number of people in our city. Now, one of the things that I think would help is if we could design some kind of a program called Think Globally and Hire Locally. Now, we know that a lot of the companies here have a worldwide footprint, and they're looking for the best and brightest talent from all over the world. But we also have a lot of people here that are unemployed and underemployed. So if we could start just by looking at local people first, then we wouldn't need to bring people in from outside the city, and that would help reduce the demand for housing as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Ken?
So part of the issue that we're suffering through right now is that after the general plan was released a couple of years ago, the businesses just really flooded the planning department with requests for construction and so forth. And that pendulum went way over here, and you can kind of see it's moving back the other direction. That plus we're in a period of economic boom right now, which is really exciting, except it's kind of terrifying at the same time. Mountain View needs to embrace its role as an innovative hub. This is something the chamber has said in its press release just recently, and I believe that. We can be, even though it is a regional issue, we can be front and center with trying to solve this problem. I believe in smart growth, which means that you put higher-density housing near transit and mixed-use capabilities, and transit being the key thing here because we need to work on that as well. That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Mercedes?
Okay, so I'm going to say the thing that nobody wants to say. And that is, there's no great answer to solve the housing problem right now, okay? We're 12 square miles. We have to do our part, but we have about 70,000 workers coming in to Mountain View in the mornings and then leaving in the evenings. We have about, and that's pretty much a little bit less than the actual population of our city, okay? We have to play our part. We have to continue to work on the problem by creating better housing. I know people talk about smart growth. I'm talking about thoughtful growth. We have to think about our infrastructure needs when we build housing, which includes schools, and we have to work regionally with our neighboring cities to solve this problem.
Okay, thank you. Pat?
Well, it's always hard to come sort of down the line in a question like this because many good things have been said. We do, we are having a boom now in office space, and we're really having a boon in housing too, but it's just not nearly as much as the office space. I think that we need to work regionally, and that's something that we haven't done a lot of in the past, and we need to concentrate more on that. I think the other thing that we need to do is we need to work really hard on transportation because what's really unpleasant about the more housing is the traffic that it produces. So if we can solve the traffic problem by getting people out of their cars, then I think we'll all be much, much happier with the balance that we have.
Okay, thanks. Lenny?
Yeah. When I formed the campaign for Balanced Mountain View in March, one of the first things I did is contact the Employment Development Department and look at the data. The data is pretty damning. Mountain View needs to set a goal, a goal that we will not let the difference between jobs and employed residents get any worse. That's the root of the problem, not just here, but throughout the Bay Area. It is a regional problem. We're creating problems for San Francisco, for San Jose, for Tracy. And unless we own up to it, we're going to have a bigger problem throughout the area. I'm working already with people in neighboring cities to try to solve this problem regionally, but I don't think our council can put off this problem and say, "Other cities have to do it." Yes, we need better transit. More housing here will make it easier for us to do better transit. And I want you to ask the other candidates straight out throughout the campaign, what are you going to do to solve this problem? Because it's not going to go away on its own.
Lenny? Greg?
Yes, the simple answer to the question is build more housing. Question is, where do you do it and how? And it has to be, and whatever you build has to be tempered by the limitations of our infrastructure, our transit system, and our roads. It's just not that simple. There are also schools involved that have to be built if we're going to increase our population density. But the fundamental answer is we need to build more housing. Now, this is a regional problem, and this has been going on for at least 30 years, 40 years that I'm aware of. It's always been an attitude of, well, all our workers are going to live somewhere else, and we can build more office space and reap the tax benefits from that. Well, that doesn't work, and you start doing it on a regional level. So somehow we've got to bend the curve and start having these municipalities around us think differently. But Mountain View has to lead the way about how we're going to solve this problem as a regional. It's a massive regional problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Okay, so we're going to move on then to our rapid-fire questions. And I have here our first question from the audience. And Greg, we'll start with you. So the question is, should the city permit new development in areas like North Bay Shore, San Antonio, El Camino, and East Wisman prior to the adoption of a precise plan governing each specific area?
So I think you said I was going to start?
Yes.
Okay, so my attitude is that we should not. We've run into some difficulties already with trying to approve things before the precise plans were done. It's trying to design a part of a system without having the system around you defined. And as a system engineer, that's not a good idea. So that's my attitude is to, if we have to accelerate the development of these precise plans, we should do that. But we should not make massive developments without having an idea of what the roadmap is, where we're going, and what we're trying to do.
Okay, thanks. Lenny, same question. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah.
Okay. Should the city permit new development in areas like North Bay Shore, San Antonio, El Camino, East Wisman prior to the adoption of a precise plan governing each specific area?
Simple answer is no. We don't just need to build more housing or more services. We need to plan neighborhoods. Neighborhoods, family-friendly neighborhoods are the core of a city. So I don't just want to put housing in North Bay Shore. I want to have a school. I want to have services. I want to see a school in the San Antonio area. It's part of the Los Altos School District. That's what makes a strong neighborhood, and that's what makes a strong city. If we go ahead and do these projects before we have the precise plans in place, we don't get that.
Okay. Pat, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay. Should the city permit new development in areas like North Bay Shore, San Antonio, El Camino, East Wisman prior to the adoption of a precise plan governing each specific area?
No. Mountain View has a really good planning process. First, we put together a precise plan, and that's kind of a tailored zoning plan for a neighborhood. We bring in the people who live there, the people who live nearby. We get their good ideas, and we come up with a good plan. Then, after we've done that, the developers know what we have in mind, and they can go forward with suggestions. It's a good plan. It's maybe not fast, but it's a very, very good process, so we should continue with that. I do think that we need to consider, and we need to look at the development as neighborhoods, which is intrinsic to the precise plan process. I'm looking forward to promoting housing and a new neighborhood in the North Bay Shore.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to another question, and Mercedes, we'll start with you. The question is, has the city done an adequate job to identify potential sites for low-income housing and the housing element?
Well, I think the city could do more to identify sites for low-income housing and affordable housing. And we need to continue to press those issues and make sure that we invest the funds that we have. I believe it's about $13 million right now that the city has to do that, and also look for other sources of funding to create better solutions for our housing problems, especially for affordable housing. So I believe we need to do more.
Okay. Ken? Want me to repeat it?
No, thank you. The short, there is no short answer here. This is actually a complicated question. It's probably the most intractable problem we have in Mountain View, is that we're losing or becoming a gentrified city, and that's a scary proposition. The first civilian roundtable had to do with exactly that. And I've seen it with respect to some of the commissioners that I've worked with, where they're leaving Mountain View because they can't afford to stay here. There's, what Mercedes said was that we need to do more is probably an understatement. We need to look for, we need to use every tool and look for every opportunity to include below-market rate and other affordable housing solutions to keep the diversity of Mountain View intact. And that's economic and ethnic diversity.
Okay. Jim? Come up.
It's probably going to surprise a lot of people, but I actually do think that the city has been doing an adequate job of it. Now, that's not to say that it can't do more, and that's not to say that there shouldn't be more. But I know that this is something that the city has been looking at very carefully for the last few years. The Franklin Street development is an example of a success story that the city has in that area. But the problem is that this is a city of only 12 square miles, and so trying to put together something or trying to get the land where you can put something like that is very difficult, as well as coming up with the financing for it and making sure that it, whatever project you're going to put there is going to fit in with the neighborhood. And then, in some cases, there's also the subject of assembling parcels, which is something that I'm actually against, but I know it's something that the city does from time to time to get together a big enough piece of land to create a project. So there are definitely challenges facing that.
Okay, thanks. All right. We're going to move on to another question, and Lisa, we'll start with you. The question is, do you support raising development housing impact fees to generate funding for affordable housing?
Well, as been said before, this isn't probably an easy answer. I know that we need to do what we can to have the overall cost of housing be affordable for everyone. I would not, however, want to put Mountain View in a position where we're not competitive and maybe sort of halt all construction in Mountain View because our fees are too high or higher than the surrounding areas, which would drive housing to Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, other places. So I think we need to take a look at where we are versus the other cities and make sure we're competitive.
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
Thank you. So I agree that obviously we want to increase the supply. Part of what Lisa mentioned is wanting to make sure that we're attractive to developers, and part of that is thinking about how can we be creative in terms of incentivizing that might be, you know, different from housing impact fees. We mentioned earlier, we're commercial linkage fees, looking at a variety of different solutions that could not necessarily put a burden on anyone, but look towards the, look towards this, it is difficult, it is a difficult question, but look towards being creative. And I think something we've done on Planning Commission is ask for additional below-market rate units and talking about public benefit. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Margaret?
I think that the one area that we could do better in Mountain View in attracting really more, not more fees necessarily, but we're talking about public benefits. And I think that we could get some real clarity about what public benefits really are, and I think that could definitely include that contribution into the affordable or the attainable housing, I'm calling it, because I think we want to continue to build on that. And I think with the below-market rate and the fees that we have now, I think we are competitive in the valley, and I think we want to stay that way. We've got a tough issue right now of having so much, but I think we have an opportunity to be a little bit more creative and utilize the public benefit realm to help us get to that solution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the next question, and Ken, we'll start with you here.
Did you say?
We'll start with you in this question. Should the city require new housing to include more parking to keep cars off the streets or less parking to enable higher-density housing?
That depends on where they're developing. So clearly, parking is an incentive to either go carless or not. I believe that regardless of whether the city is demanding this or not, as the younger kids who are coming out of college and so forth start occupying spaces in Mountain View and other cities, they are changing their behavior versus what us older people have done. I'm 47 for the record, and I can't conceive of not having a car, but they can. And so I think we need to build a housing stock that would accommodate that type of living style. In the residential neighborhood, it makes no sense at all. So I'm not sure the exact question, but the city should be building or requiring parking or having parking requirements that are variable depending on where the location is.
Okay, thank you. Mercedes?
So it's a little bit of a chicken-and-egg scenario, right? You don't create parking, and that's going to help, you know, especially in the downtown area with businesses because we don't want to hurt our small businesses down there. If there's not enough parking, people won't go there as it stands. Well, if you create, if you don't have parking, it's going to, you know, going to push people to go out there and walk, bike, take public transportation. I think we need to, again, be thoughtful, and depending on where the development is going, think about the parking needs there. A good example is 801 El Camino, which is on the corner of Castro and El Camino, where Pete's Coffee is. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. And, you know, there's, they're going to, we're going to do a development there where it's going to be retail on the bottom and housing on top. So that parking struck, you know, we have to figure out how much parking we need there. And I know that the parking is going to be a little bit tight. There's going to be a road diet there. So I'd like to take it on a case-by-case basis and evaluate the needs of the area and the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mercedes. Okay, Pat?
Well, this is another one where the answer is, "It depends." And it certainly does. It depends on a number of factors. Where the housing, was the question about housing, Oscar, or just parking in general?
I'll repeat it for you. Should the city require new housing to include more parking to keep cars off the streets or less parking to enable higher-density housing?
That's my thought. It is about housing, all right. Yeah, it still depends on where the housing is and what type of housing it is. I mean, when we have transit-oriented development near the train station, people don't need to have nearly as many cars because hopefully they're moving there so they can take the train a lot. And we're finding in some of our apartments that people don't use as many cars as they used to. But I think that it's, we are a car-based society, and parking is something that really upsets people. So we need to develop nexus studies as we move forward and see what works and learn from what happens, and just move forward based on what our investigations show.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, and Lenny, here's a question. We'll start with you. So are you aware of the climate change adaptation actions that advise that cities not build where the environment is threatened, such as North Bay Shore? How would you account for the environment in building in North Bay Shore?
Well, there are some things that are built into the precise plan right now, and the city has been dealing with, looking at climate change in terms of how we build levees and dikes. We have habitat overlay zones. We can protect a lot of the environment in North Bay Shore and still restore the Wetlands, the project that Pat's working on. But the biggest thing we have to deal with because is the commute patterns. The vehicle miles traveled by people who work in Mountain View, particularly North Bay Shore, have a much greater impact on our global environment than the little things we want to do with windows and air conditioners or whatever to make the buildings more efficient. The best way to solve the global environment is the way to solve the local environment, and that's to build an integrated, multi-use community in North Bay Shore.
Okay, thank you. Lenny? Greg?
Yes. Could you repeat the question, just make sure I understand it correctly?
Are you aware of the climate change adaptation actions that advise that cities not build where the environment is threatened, such as North Bay Shore? How would you account for the environment in building in North Bay Shore?
Okay, there is a number of projects going on, as previously mentioned. The South Bay Salt Pond Project is rebuilding the salt ponds, which has a mitigation effect for sea level rise that would help protect North Bay Shore. But as somebody previously said, the levees and so forth that would be needed to prevent any kind of flooding or at least delay the impact of that. But I was on the Environmental Sustainability Task Force in 2008, and one of the things I learned there is half of the CO2 produced by Mountain View is from cars and trucks. And if you can eliminate commutes by doing the things that have been previously mentioned, a little more dense environment, making an urban community where people have to, can walk instead of drive their cars, you're doing much, much more in preventing sea level rise than anything else.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Margaret, same question for you.
I think that the idea of impacting the environment comes to have the people that come into an area that has already become a protected environment. We naturally have a tendency to encroach on that environment because we are living every day, and we have our own particular needs and wants. And I think that there are many things in the current precise plan in North Bay Shore, and that's why we have a habitat overlay zone and we have a reduced size of the buildings. And we do the, you know, we have a graduated height limit that goes out to Bay Shore. So we are looking at protecting that environment, and I think that's what we have to look at, the vision of the future. And we have to understand what we know now about the environment and make sure we make the right decision.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next question, and we'll start with you, Ellen. And it's a little bit of a long one, but it says, "It seems that the new housing is, it seems that new housing is located in one side of the city more than the other. Is there some concern over the unfairness of the location of the new housing? And also, are there other surrounding cities truly building as much as Mountain View?"
So I'll take a stab at the second part of that question first, which is, "I don't know." I don't know at the rates of which, you know, I think our neighbor to, we can think of our neighbor to the north, Palo Alto. I can say, I guess that they're not building as much as us. Driving through Sunnyvale, which I do to get to San Jose for work, it looks like they're developing. But again, that's something that I would be happy to get back to whomever asked that question. But when we talk about if development is happening more on one part of the city, I feel that my experience on Planning Commission has shown me that actually we're developing throughout the city. On El Camino, we are looking at San Antonio. So I think that we're definitely changing and more than happy to hear from residents who feel that if they're, if they feel that there is an area of the city that has been unfairly targeted.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, we do have quite a bit of activity going on in the city, and it is in alignment with the general plan. And we did take a look at where development should be happening, both office and residential. And we looked at things like public transportation, where we could have village centers. And so we do see development happening in the way we kind of thought it would, although maybe at a faster pace than we thought it would. And so I also am not sure, I think it's like unfairly distributed. It was thought out where it should be happening. In terms of the other cities, I probably would say the same thing. I don't know how much is going on, although I see quite a bit happening in Sunnyvale. And I'm hoping everyone else is doing their fair share, like I think Mountain View is doing. But I'd have to get the data specifically on the other cities to find out.
Thanks, Lisa. Jim?
Yes, as Lisa said, there are definitely targeted development areas within the city, but there are also some areas of the city that are newer and some that are older. So of course, the ones that are newer aren't going to see as much development just because of the fact that you don't want to get rid of existing thriving businesses like the Milk, Pale, and Rose Market who are being impacted, you know, by such developments. And then as far as, you know, other cities that are doing a lot of building, you've got Redwood City. I'm on Caltrain all the time. Every time I go by, it seems like they've got a new building up every day. The same with San Mateo. If you go to where the old horse racing track was, they've got an entire city out there the size of Mountain View that they've been working on building for about the last year. So yeah, there are other cities that are definitely, you know, building a lot, but they have a lot more space than we do as well. Redwood City's a lot larger, and so is San Mateo. That's why we need to be very careful about what and where we build here.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to start with you, Lenny, on this question. And the question is, again, it's kind of a long one, but it says, "In your view, can the red ovals, or meaning preferred areas for housing, drawn along El Camino Realto, indicate intersections designated as priority growth encompass more than one intersection at a time and push, and push how far and how high into the adjacent neighborhoods?"
Okay.
You repeat that?
The answer is yes. In general, I support the emerging city policy of tapering where we don't allow new buildings to be more than one story above adjacent residential areas. And I think we can do that for most of El Camino. And I think we can do that for most of El Camino. We've got a big problem with traffic on El Camino that we need to solve and it doesn't seem to be addressed in the precise plan. And that is, we already have gridlock at rush hour on parts of El Camino, a lot of traffic all the time. And all we have coming down the road is a proposal, uh, I guess from VTA, Valley Transportation Agency, to take away lanes, uh, for buses. I don't think that's the solution. I think we have to figure out the traffic before we go too far in terms of development. But I do like the idea in the long run of clustering development along these major intersections, the so-called village centers. There's a lot of good thought that's gone into that precise plan, but we've gotta solve the traffic issue. That's one of the biggest traffic issues this city's gonna face in years to come.
Thanks, Lenny. Greg?
I'd ask, I'd ask you to repeat the question, but I'm not sure it would help. So, I think what you're fundamentally asking is about the transition zones between, uh, developed, developed areas and then the areas of single-family. And in the general plan, there's a phrase in there about, uh, the, uh, there needs to be design considerations made about the transitions between different zones. Um, and that's, that's precisely what we, we're talking about here and somebody said, uh, you know, one, one-story differences. So, it's, we have to be very careful that we don't, uh, jeopardize the investments that homeowners have in their single-family homes. We wanna protect those neighborhoods. But we also have to re, recognize that the city has to, in, in certain areas, priority development areas, has to get more dense. So, the transitions are gonna be critical and how they do that is gonna take some innovation and some, uh, some deep thought about how to do that. Uh, the concept of urban environments, uh, clusters of urban environments, uh, is a good one because that reduces commutes and hopefully will help alleviate some of the commute problems that, that will arise from the higher density. But, um, it's key that we do the transitions in a very thoughtful way. Thank you.